Lord, for this day and for life, for this city that we know, we love, and we serve, we do give you thanks. And I ask that those things we do be always pleasant and honorable in your sight. We ask this in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
We need a pledge now. Who has the flag?
Well, no flag.
The flag's over there.
The flag's over there. United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She got on the right shirt anyway. Hey. Okay, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have an agenda?
We do not have a formal agenda, Mayor.
I'm advised we have no agenda. This is a planning session.
It's a usual planning session. I will say that Mr. Adams has submitted a list of some things he'd like to talk about. I prepared a list of some things I'd like to talk about, and I suspect other council members may have done likewise. If so, I propose that we sort of prepare an agenda right hand.
All right, sir. You want to approach him? Give us an agenda.
All right. I would like to discuss a formulation of a press policy. I would like to discuss traffic policy. I would like to discuss P and Z requirements regarding streetlights. And then, Mr. Adams had a couple of items that I think he could add some if he'd like, but I think at Wheel Department Heads was an item for discussion. Correspondence to the Department of Transportation regarding our offerings. The recycling center. A city vehicle use policy. The annexation of a portion of Poucher's Mill Road. And I know you had on your original list something about the welcome of Byron signs. I think that, I don't know if that really needs to be addressed in the planning session. It's just that Allen's not here.
No, I just see him in Dexter City. He's the leader of Atlanta and Illinois.
He's got it. And Tiffany may have. He's got it. He had a...
I've got the drawing on.
Yeah, he's got a drawing that he prepared, got a thing, and I just, I looked at it and said it was a little elaborate. If we want, we can add toward it in the maintenance. I guess in the grand scheme of things, in the order of importance, I would put it a little farther down than all this other stuff. Mike, is there anything you want to add?
Well, I guess I'm just adding to the table and others.
Okay. Did I cover your stuff, Rusty, that you would like to talk about? Any other? Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to add? A list to be talked about?
I've got about ten items here that are things we discussed beginning in 2008 at the summer meeting, and I'll distribute this to members of the council and the appropriate departments. Most of this, I'm pleased to say, had been either done or significant progress made in doing these things. For instance, I've got a natural gas marketing plan here, which we took care of that sometime ago. But in any event, I don't have a bitter trouble coming on after Mr. Chumley adding what we need to talk about. As far as the procedures concerned involving the meeting here, I have, from the standpoint of procedure, I think we probably need to, as a matter of record, have a motion essentially to resolve ourselves into a committee to hold for purposes of discussion, and that way we don't have to motion seconds and all that good stuff. We just do have a real good frank talk among ourselves about what's going on. It's my understanding that no one expects us at the end of this meeting to have motions and seconds, and we will reserve that, you know, resolutions and ordinances for our next regular meeting. But this is an information, say what you got to say, kind of meeting, and it's a very worthy thing to do. Having said that...
Mayor, our move that we resolve ourselves into a committee to hold for the purpose of planning and discussion.
And there's the second further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, while opposed, no, the ayes have it. We're in there.
I do have one thing I want to bring up for discussion.
Yeah.
And that's lunch.
Lunch?
I think good decisions are made on full bellies, and I don't want lunch to sit over there and do the waste.
Well, we came out to suggest to the mayor that we grab our lunch, because I had envisioned this as a working lunch, not as a, that we could talk over the meal on some of these items and get started, so we're not wasting time.
In that spirit, I call on Brother Richardson to give me blessings, please.
Of the food only. We're already blessed to be here. Lord, thank you for all the many blessings. Thank you for the food that's been prepared. Thank you for everyone who is about to receive it. Most of our Lord came from our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, James. Right on target, baby.
Bernhardt House, Chapman Road extension to Bev County. That was one that's still kind of in the mill. And the Peach Crawford Parkway was how, at that point in history, we were calling the Ben Hawkins Parkway, so that's been completed. Item two, animal control facility. Item three, historical preservation ordinance. Item four, impact fee ordinance. And as you can see, many of these have been taken care of. My item five was a natural gas marketing plan. We're out of the gas business, and we've had a real, real good thing up to do there, but I always say that because of what Mike did, and I appreciate that. Item six, grant manager. Kind of got a grant manager on board now. Item seven, I had a city facilities manager in there. We got the depot, the community center, and the old Luxor. There's items that needed management. We made some progress on that. Item eight, I have the park slash greenspace development. I had a little outline there as to what the city owns and is available to us. And an item I have there which we've not dealt with and which will be, I think, a good one, that Tom Richardson will take care of, the Gibson family property adjacent to the park and the jailhouse alley. There's some space down there we need, and what happens is people keep dying, and the pot keeps getting spread out. We've had, we do need to take care of that. My item nine was stormwater utility. I don't think, we probably need to discuss that. We've had the plan done, got everything going on that. Then, as an adjunctive, I listed the four areas where water can leave the city, the Sandy Run, the Bay Doll, the whole branch, and the Timber Ridge area, so we've got something going with that. Then, item, my item ten was a legislation item. And the legislation, I've mentioned that we operate under a 1941 charter, which was wonderful in 1941, but like some of my cars, it's kind of outdated, so I think everybody's going forward towards updating the charter. Some of the things we'll talk about today would need some charter action or legislation to take care of that, so. That is an overview of my list, and it's really a pretty extensive list, but I want everyone to have an understanding about what my ideas are, where I think we need to be going. With that, I'll pass.
I think briefly, I think Joan had told us some dozen times that we probably needed to do a comprehensive charter update. And I'd never disagreed with that. I noticed that Larry has on his item ten, number three, a little brief flur about addressing the former government in which we operate, which I guess all of y'all, everybody's been to newly elected, so everybody understands what strong council, weak mayor, former government is. Basically, it means the mayor doesn't have a vote unless he's, unless there's a tie, and he can, under our charter, he can veto an act of council, and then within, he can do that within a certain number of days, and then council can meet again, and with four votes or more override that veto, as I understand it, so that the original act goes into force. I can't imagine and have never seen a situation where this particular mayor has ever exercised that power, as he noted in his thing, and I can't imagine that he would do so if it was five to vote, nothing vote of council to start with. But I also realize that sometimes you've got to make a statement about some things, so that power does exist. And I think, I know that once or twice some of us have discussed the notion of a city manager, former government, which might be something to explore, primarily as it ties into one of Rusty's items he wanted to talk about, position. As it now stands, while we have a personnel policy in effect, it doesn't contain a very effective means of reviewing for employment adequacy purposes the performance of department I have two or three times suggested that we incorporate some other things that include complaints from the public, maybe even include an annual survey of the employees of the department, so that we have something additional to. It would be an anonymous survey, obviously. It couldn't be something where everybody has put a name on it. It'd be something else to consider, because right now we just don't have an effective means of doing that. So that's just something to think about in the overall notions about former government. Would anybody have any real heartburn for Tom starting to undertake a review and a rewrite of our charter, just to bring it into current form? James?
I think so. The only thing that I would say is, you know, I'd like to sit down and talk to some people after reviewing it and just say, and get some ideas about what's worked, what hadn't worked, and that kind of thing. And I've been really enjoying several people here, department heads, everything, send me things to review. And the only thing I would ask is, if you send it to me to review, give me a little context as to, you know, here's a dog cat ordinance, this is a problem we're trying to deal with, you know, we got, this is a little, why we're considering that, it kind of makes it easier for me.
All right. Well, Mike, look, that's an action item on the council's agenda, just to authorize Tom to start undertaking that review to determine what best ought to be done to revise our charter and bring it up to date. I think, as Larry noted, I think number nine is pretty much taken care of. This is the, we'll probably do at some point, need to make some, I don't even know if everybody was aware that we own that five acres right there at the corner by the White Road and the interstate. I don't know that it's, obviously, because of the location factors and interchange there, it makes it very difficult to use it as any kind of commercial development, unless we should ever convince the DOT and their long-term planning to make White Road part of the state system as a connecting route between Highway 41 and Highway 49 slash Highway 42. I know we've put that on their suggested agenda several times. We put it into the, as one of the projects in the upcoming tax plan. We've mentioned it a number of times, sort of in conjunction with taking the Highway 42 where it hits 49, bringing it across behind the church, tying it into White Road, and making that a connector with Highway 41. So, you know, that's, we've said that to the DOT. That's really been something that's been on the agenda since my first term on council, really. We've talked about that repeatedly, and we've suggested it to them repeatedly, and we've asked them to put it on some kind of long-term plan repeatedly. DOT does what DOT does.
And we fix the angle of Walker Road and White Road, the interchanges they do.
They'll take care of all of that.
There were several proposals back in, during the transportation supply legislation and vote we had. One of them was to extend 42 straight across the road over behind the Baptist Church and intersect with Lender Drive, and let that be the main cutoff point for 49, that we access businesses, particularly the drugstore in that neighborhood, that do away essentially with that, with that crossing there on White Road, and just rearrange White Road. We got favorable reviews, but haven't made the final list on anything we're working on. I'd like to keep that certain in front of us. The other thing that nears here is how hard there is this back way to Full Valley going through down Moser Road. That's just how it's straight right out here. We've had any number of people write DOT, Mayor and council, and have done a resolution on that several years ago, involved with that as a safety issue. And I think now all of you know exactly where I'm talking about. Go the back road here, hit 44 that after Moser Road. I think the engineer is terrible there, and if you cannot come to a dead stop, look both ways, clear yourself, and accelerate in time to get across that, or somebody could pick it directly up inside. That's my, get a little mask on, and it just don't compute, so.
Not to mention we could turn onto Moser Road coming into town.
Yeah.
The angle there is just incredibly difficult.
You get into a centrifugal force situation.
It really is dangerous.
You know, I knew that word, didn't I?
You just said that so freely.
It throws you away from there. But yeah, that's one of those things I'd like, like to keep in front of us.
I think the mayor's other item under that park and greenspace development is, it's a good idea here, this, we just mentioned the park downtown. The Gibson family's on that adjacent tract, a property that's between, what's Christie's business name?
Oona.
Oona. And our park for years, and it was originally owned by Sim Gibson and his brothers and sisters. Most of them have passed away. Sim just recently died. Sim had been in my office not three months before he died, talking about that piece of property, and he was just about at that point where he was ready to let it go to the city, but he doesn't have sole control. And I had been talking to him and had not brought it to council yet, because he had not agreed, but the idea was that maybe the city could put forward some of the legal costs to straighten out the title, so that we could then acquire it with good title. And then he passed away, so that never, never came to fruition, but it's at a point where, that's the problem, if I don't, I don't, and maybe we could authorize Tom to look into the possibility of simply determining whether the city could legitimately seek to acquire the property through some other means other than a negotiated purchase, which would then allow us to straighten out the title with city funds, because the problem we have is unless we have a clear right to buy it, we can't spend city money. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I wouldn't think we could spend city money straightening out a title, only to arrive at a point where somebody changes their mind and says, oh, we don't want to sell it to y'all after all. So, the problem with getting a sales contract is the same thing. Last count I had, there were about eighteen people that were in the chain of people that had to be dealt with. And I learned all that from helping Sim straighten out his property over there where he lived. So I know how many people are involved, there's a bunch of them. Some of them are less cooperative than others. But if y'all would, if y'all would do that, maybe we could authorize Tom to just look into that and determine. I know there's condemnation that's available for certain purposes, and I just don't know if the acquisition of public park space is one of those things, so maybe we could put that on the agenda. Unless you just know the answer and you're willing to share it right now.
I was going to say, really, you're authorized to do that tonight, and you ought to be authorized to do that, so.
I would agree, there's a lot of things we ought to be able to do.
Tom, we've referred to this location for years as the Gibson addition to the park, so if we go through the process for a working title, that'd be a good thing to continue to call it.
Okay.
I think somewhere along the line, I had it, passed it on to Michael, he passed it on to you.
Well, and my thought, and I told, I told Mr. Gibson this, that the ideal way to resolve it, and I told him what we needed to do was simply file an equitable partitioning action, because there absolutely is nothing any heir can do to defend it, other than to simply wait for the check that eventually comes for their portion of, by ownership of the sales proceeds. And it's a means, but, and if some remaining heir with an interest in the property wants to undertake that, it may be something that we can, that we can undertake, but then again, the same problem comes around again. We have no way to contract to ensure that we are the buyer. It has to be offered at a public or private sale. Now, we could buy it in a private sale, I suppose, but, but some receiver has to make that decision. And so again, you get into that situation where whether the city's going to budget. Might be, y'all want to authorize Tom to just look into that and see? Are you good enough for you?
You're talking about right there at White Road Ridge?
No, I'm talking about right there in the bar. The piece of property that's between Christie's little business and the bathrooms, our existing where it's cut back to, where it becomes an overgrown block, that's it. About eighteen or twenty people on that piece of property. And it ain't big enough, it's not big enough to, I don't believe you could get a building permit to build anything on it without some kind of a special exemption or barrier.
It probably would not pass zoning for an individual structure.
How big is that lot over there? I can't remember.
The, like the house, well...
That piece, the parcel?
Yep.
Yeah. It's not even...
I don't think it's a half acre.
Probably around quarter of an acre.
Maybe it's a... Anyway, we can put that on the agenda and authorize Tom to look into that formally, I guess.
Everybody okay with that? Everybody know what we're talking about? Everybody knows. Now, as far as the roadway going over the five acre parcel, rather, the, everybody knows where that is, the parking, where I, area we're talking about. As you start up over the hill at the interstate, you know, as you start over the hump, be right onto the right-hand side, there's some low-lying property in there adjacent to the interstate, across the road to my existing park. That's, that's there. We got another one on Hudson, Hudson Street, what I call the TOT, the Tot Park. We need to take a look at that. The city owns that straight up, there's no problem with that. Just need to figure out what to do with it.
It may be that we just need to offer them for safe. Now, I don't know what, you know, what we can and can't do with them, what we want to do with them, but that's something we probably need to think about, just, I don't know that we can really make a decision today, because half of y'all probably weren't even aware. I didn't even know about Hudson Street until I read it.
How big is Hudson Street?
City building a lot, just, I called it, like, some Hudson Street, about, probably an acre and an acre.
Want me to get Tiffany to take this BOE property? You want to talk about that for a minute? This is the board of education property behind the current old school building back here.
I had, as you all know, we were awarded a DNR trail grant last year, and it just so happened that there was, again, about five property owners that had to agree to allow the trail to go through their property, and one changed his mind, decided he really didn't want to go through the back of this property. So this year, it's increased to $200,000 for that same DNR grant, which we had a great run last year and were awarded. We just had to give the money back, because we couldn't change where we wanted to have it during the cycle. So when I originally thought we could, I had asked, could we put the park behind the old school back here? And Mayor and council agreed to move the project, but unfortunately, DNR did not. What I was looking to do is a social needs park. With what the mayor just said, you know, we could try to do the Gibson, you can acquire property with this $200,000, we could try the Gibson thing, we could try on White Road, adjacent or across the street from the North Peach Park, we could put the park there. They love to connect to an existing park, DNR does. So there's a couple of different options. This park could go two or three different places, and it would be for special needs children. So you'd have North Peach Park, and then connecting to another park that would allow special needs children throughout the community. We have people from all over the middle Georgia area come to North Peach to begin with. So it would be a great thing to put here, at, behind our building, or one of several other places. And again, we could acquire the property if the Gibson land came through for that purpose, and then the city wouldn't have to come out of pocket for it. But that was, that was our plan, and that is due the first part of January, that grant is. So we have a little bit of time for you guys to think about it and kind of see where you'd like to see that sort of project go. And we would have to, we would require a 20% match. When we applied for it last time, Public Works was very instrumental in allowing their guys and their equipment to go towards that 20%. So of course, I would get with Tiffany and see if we couldn't come up with something like that again, so that we didn't have to put any cash towards it. It would be the Public Works, you know, putting in, and you base their salary, and how much the equipment costs, and those sort of things, to come up with that 20%, so that we're not looking out of pocket for money.
Thanks, and that was partly to talk about why maybe it's a good idea to acquire that BOE property behind here, so. We, we do have this continuing issue about the city facilities, and now we've added another one to keep up with. So we do need to deal with that at some point. There was, I have, we need to have a meeting of the public properties committee, because I had met with the folks who were going to be the regular tenants in the other property across from Graveyard, and they have a proposal they'd like to make with respect to their use of that building, so. It's probably in the right venue to talk about that. The public properties committee does need to meet, and need to address that, and make a determination as to how we want to respond to that. I could say, though, that it really doesn't include them taking care of the building as we had originally kind of, as one of the options that was to be proposed and included. I say all that just to say that the mayor's item seven is something that we really, really need to consider. I don't know exactly how, I don't know if we should talk about a position for that or what we need to do, but we do need to, everybody needs to give that some thought, I think we really, through the creation of our new department, have taken care of the mayor's item number six, I believe. Number five, as we sold our gas facilities in exchange for a membership and job. Number five, as we sold our gas facilities in exchange for a membership in J O N G, we took care of that. J O N G now does all the gas marketing, they do all the maintenance of the facilities. They've saved us tremendous amounts of money in having to train people to, uh, take care of gas facilities. And, uh, what I am trying to do, as your representative on that board, is to move the entire membership towards the idea that J O N G can do the contracting for the gas, so that the cities do not have to have their individual contracts for gas. The way gas works is each of the cities has to buy its share of the gas that has contributed to the overall, uh, use of gas through the J O N G distribution system. And in addition to that, each city has to have its own separate contract with the pipeline ownership for the transport of that gas to the central Georgia area. Buying the gas is the easy part. We can get just about all the gas we want. The problem is, there's only so much volume in the pipe, and you can only compress gas so much until you've reached the point at which you cannot put any more gas through the pipe, and so, that's why the transportation facility is the difficult issue there. J O N G has initiated an effort to reach out to the legislative delegation with an idea of marketing central Georgia, inducing the construction of additional pipeline supply to the state of Georgia, uh, because it's a really good economic development tool to have natural gas. And in fact, Tiffany and Wayne James right now are working towards the possibility of seeing if, uh, our new subdivision is interested in natural gas, uh, out there off the two forty-seven connector, so.
Correct, and, uh, what is, uh, what's the, what's the subdivision over there off Chapman Michael? Timber Ridge? They're extending their lines for their latest phase.
That's correct. Right, so it's also possible that we'll be selling gas there as well?
Mm-hmm.
We have a historical preservation ordinance.
Let's look at it a little bit, though, because what I was hearing, we need some more design standards in order to get federal deductions to people who voluntarily go into this road. I'll follow up on that. Follow up with Tom on it, see what we need to do.
We need to create the committee, the mayor? Is that what?
I think you're right.
Okay, guys.
I've been so long away from that, you know, the primary thrust of things, I kinda got behind me, but I sure work with you on it, though. How about that?
Okay.
I don't know where the impact fee deal stands. We, of course, we've got our stormwater fee, efforts completed, enacted, uh, I think the legislature's kinda imposed requirements on impact fees generally, haven't they, Tom? I mean, you have to do a, a special taxation district now and that sort of stuff, if you wanna do that, that sort of thing.
I think so.
Which...
Maybe it's might as well.
Well, it's a, I mean, the owners wouldn't sue you, because they, they would be participants in the creation of the district. You couldn't create it without the, without the property owners in the district agreeing to tax themselves at a greater rate, essentially, is the way I understand it, is that it's a difficulty.
Okay.
Yep.
Also, it's a deterrent for business coming.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, Henry Kelly, I don't know what former they used, they have a, they have an impact fee for almost every department, from police to fire to, um, public works, everything, and it's broken down when they sit you in the bill. How about that? That's what I'm saying here, so.
As far as the animal control facility, we kinda fixed up what we got. Since Clay's been on the job, he's done a great job kinda cleaning that up, straightening it up, making it more secure, making it more eye-friendly. But that was a part of the...
SPOLOST money.
What year?
SPOLOST, there.
Fifty-five dollars.
Two thousand eight?
Eight.
Two thousand eight SPOLOST.
Mm-hmm.
It was agreed that, through intergovernmental agreement, the SPOLOST funds would fund the construction of the animal control facility and finance the purchase and equipping of two vehicles, if I remember right. It would not pay salaries, but we felt like between the two cities and the county, at that point, we could probably come up with a salary structure that would be, uh, useful. However, the, and I'm not... Bottom line, whoever went over there, well, they had the same, let me put it this way, they had the same experience with the bids, or the pricing on their animal control facility that we had when we built a men's and women's bathroom in the parking lot. If y'all remember when we originally called for bids on that, I think the cheapest one we had was something like a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and we had one that was like a hundred and sixty thousand or something, and it was like, we built it for twenty-two thousand dollars, something like that, twenty-three thousand dollars, and it's up to all A D A standards, and it's, so, the bottom line is, we have a, we have a lot of folks out there who, because bidding on government contracts requires certain compliance with certain things, there's a limited number of people who do it, and as a consequence, they value their services much more highly than your average guy who's out there constructing stuff in the world. And the bid they got on the animal control facility was nearly three hundred thousand dollars, if I remember right.
We met twice with them, and the result of all that was that we were not gonna do one, and so, the fifty thousand dollars had been spent otherwise in animal control, was that, was it pulled down yet?
Uh, we, we would, we would get those...
Did it go to the county?
It was a county-wide program.
Yeah, it was gonna be a county-wide facility.
Okay. They were supposed to be using a hundred thousand for the city, and I think two hundred thousand for the county to do it all, but my understanding is enough money wasn't raised from the SPOLOST.
Well, that was the second issue. First was the amount of, what it was gonna cost to build the facility was prohibitively high, and therefore, there was not enough money really allocated to do everything that was committed, and then, secondly, the collections fell short of the target anyway, so...
That one of the projects was...
That sort of fell by the wayside, is what, what, what it amounts to. Um, so that's probably something we need to revisit at some point in time, I think.
Well, you know, we're doing a splendid job now, so...
Clay's doing a great job, it's just a question of, of silver. I think he's got a good relationship with the...
Volunteers?
The volunteers, the folks that place animals, the folks that try to save them from, uh, you know, being disposed of, and, uh, he does a great job. I notice every time he picks one up, it winds up on the city's Facebook, um, where he's asking, you know, did somebody lose their dog, and describes the dog, and has pictures of it, and, uh, and so far as I can tell, some of those dogs have been successfully reclaimed by their owners because of that kind of stuff, so. But we do probably need to, anybody particularly interested in that? Yeah? Rest?
Doing my facility?
Just looking at what Clay needs, and maybe looking at what we could, you know, expand or rebuild one for, something like that.
Just a weapon support for it, yeah.
Do I?
Sure, he weapons support, so...
Oh, I know he would, I know he would, and I think he's done, he's done great with what he's doing.
What's in the old garage shop?
Y'all use that for something, don't you? In the old maintenance, in the old maintenance facility, the shop.
Oh, yeah, I think that's, that's all we utilize for public works equipment and stuff up there.
I mean, just couldn't use every day, or, every once in a while, or...
Pretty much.
Keep it dry, huh?
It's possible that, um, you know, we're supposed to get our new pole barn pretty much at any time, with the expansion of that, it's possible that we could move some stuff around.
I mean, right there, I mean, it's an indoor facility, right there.
Well, the, the thing about an indoor animal facility, too, is you gotta think about drainage.
Yeah, there are some standards that have to be met, you gotta be able to support, you know, wash it out.
It's on the slab, so, I mean, that should be, you're talking about cost efficiency, depends on how many stalls that you want to have. I mean, you got to saw cut it, you know, I don't know where the closest sewer line, but, I mean, that's minimal cost, if you got a facility that's during there.
Right.
You know, the question of it is, I...
What would it cost to rent it?
Yeah, I mean, you probably won't have to put heat, air in it, which would be, you could do that, I don't know how many square foot or how many tons, but I imagine if I...
It's a big building.
There's a sewer line right there, and I was just out there helping Clay the other day, and he's got the sewer line right behind it.
The current animal control shelter is tied into our sewer line, so, you know, the waste from the animal...
Which is behind the garage.
Can be washed into the sewer, which is actually right, the line runs right between the garage and the animal shelter now.
But, I mean, you know, I mean, that's the ideal situation, I mean, you could drop the ceiling in there, you know, I, I mean, it's still, you're building something ground up. I mean, i- if it's not, could be done, you know, or half of that building, you know, 'cause there's rolling doors on both sides.
Yeah, you could split it down to half, yeah.
I mean, the minimal cost would be very, very, you know, I'm assuming it wouldn't cost you that much.
Obviously, we wouldn't need the size of facility they were talking about at the county anyway, so, but I think he does run into situations, I mean, how many, how many bays, bays, so to speak, are in there?
Uh, three, just kept... He can, he can hold, there's four bays, but he could probably hold six dogs individually.
Right.
Uh, and that, sometimes that is a problem.
Yeah.
That is a problem.
I knew there'd been times when he just had...
Yeah. So, probably... The trick is, is when you get a dog, do like he does, and work really hard, run off the bat and get rid of it, or find him out who wants it or who it belongs to, so...
You know, if they look out five years from now, maybe entirely possible that that land, including the utility yard, will become more valuable for a central business district, and we may think long range of moving that entire complex, build locations on the periphery of the town, it would be less valuable in terms of the economic price of their use, so...
An old sewage pump comes to mind. Almost instantly.
That's right.
With another way out. With another way out.
Well, I mean, that could be, there's some, you know, there's, all I'm saying is there's land down there, and, uh, you know, we had to get rid of that facility if we cleaned it up, so now, you know, that, that is city property that could be available for, and it's far enough out of the way that it would not create disturbance to people, you know what I mean?
How much land do we own down there?
We can find itself a five acres, what?
No, we got about thirty, probably around between thirty-five, thirty-eight acres, like that. But now, that is a, you know, in my judgment, that's a good way to look at things, five years from now, what's it gonna look like, what's it gonna be, uh, the way I see growth, maybe over our convention, I'm seeing things busting out all over right now. I think that's been experienced, issues for many states.
Well, and I just, I guess I look at that area just for that very same reason, that's an area that is not ever gonna attract business development.
Yeah.
That sort of stuff, it's an ideal area for the situation of city stuff that doesn't provide the best eye appeal.
Highest and best use, aesthetics.
Public works, those sort of stuff, now that's...
I gotta get my wife or somebody forward.
Uh, you know, the, the dog pen, things of that nature, just simply aren't the sort of stuff you want necessarily right in the middle of town, as Larry mentioned, and, uh, so. Anybody got anything else on Larry's list they'd like to talk about? Larry, you got anything else on your list you'd like to talk about?
One thing that comes to mind is, obviously, a lot of folks call me and, well, we're in sewage right now, we will buy so-and-so if we got one sewage there. Well, I've been doing this a long time, that's largely a myth, you know, about one in twenty, we come to the fruition of the, uh, an area south of town is within our jurisdictional limits. Now, S D S is down there where the, uh, oh, gosh, what's the name of the adult performance club, south of two forty-seven connector, that's probably right in there, the triangle, it's gonna, I think, change ownership eventually, and the highest and best use of that property would be based upon water and sewage being down there, is something that we need to take a look at. Be right across the road from, uh, the Summit Chase stuff, so, hospital is approaching time to time about, are there opportunities for the hospital to do something with properties down there, like, you know, medical, uh, doctors' offices or something of that nature. But one of the big things always precedes those discussions, if there's water and sewage available, so, we need to, you know, keep our minds on that, that's a possibility for extension of boundaries, and of course, obviously, it affects everybody, affects the fire, the police, the utilities, and, uh, what I'd be looking at, it would be a high-impact, uh, use of the facility in that, in that neighborhood, so. Well, that about, that about takes up my time.
Well, in, uh, kind of along those lines, we could take one of those other issues. Uh, we gave a resolution last year, which we need to go ahead and put on our agenda to lean it to redo for submission to the general assembly for the Housers Mill Road action. Uh, the city of Fort Valley...
Have they de-annexed that yet?
Well, they can't de-annex it.
No, they can't?
They, they can only say they're in favor of it.
Okay.
Because that's a legislative annexation, de-annexation issue. So, they did their resolution about after we entered into our intergovernmental agreement back in, uh, two thousand and seven, and, um, I think, I don't know if we need a resolution out of them, again, to do this, I don't think so. Uh, but I believe the reason, you know, this stuff goes on the consent agenda at the legislature, and we, we've sort of had the misfortune of several things going on the last couple of years. One was the lawsuit with the city of Warren Robbins. Uh, nobody's told me this, but I believe that members of their delegation quietly informed our legislators that they would not get consent for that annexation because of that litigation.
You gotta get all entities to sign off up there, don't you?
It's not really that they sign off, it's that they don't object.
Yeah.
Uh, that's what the consent agenda is, it's a courtesy presented by members of the legislature to each other for things that involve only their district. The problem with the Housers Mill issue is it didn't involve only his district once that litigation began, and the Warren Robbins delegation, uh, they quietly indicated that, you know, that, that consent would not be forthcoming. Um, that issue's now settled, and in fact, the agreement with Warren Robbins specifically provides that they will not take any action to interfere with the annexation of Housers Mill Road by the city of Byron through their own council or through their legislative delegation. Uh, that was some of that chit-a-sta wording that I made sure that didn't agree. That was some of that chit-a-sta wording that I made sure that didn't agree. So now, it's just a matter of hopefully getting it through again, and I just don't know. They did their. They did their. Their resolution back in two thousand and seven, Tom. The agreement between the parties was done back in two thousand and seven. It's not designated an intergovernmental agreement, but it clearly is. And, uh, problem is their council's turned over a couple of times since then, and I don't know if. I don't know if they need to pass another resolution. That might be a.
Can look at it.
Something that needs to be looked at is to determine, but otherwise, we need to put it on the agenda to get our resolution done again, to submit it again to this year's legislative delegation.
Wasn't it submitted last year?
Well, but the lawsuit hadn't been resolved last year. That was the problem.
What's the timeline to put it in for the consent?
You can do it any, anytime up till, probably up till.
The tenth or eleventh.
The end of January, they're going to session.
It's good to do it now, this standpoint.
As long as they get it through before crossover day, I think it's fine.
If there's any questions, I need to let those to rest because. We've been told, Mike and I have a couple of times at GMA meetings about a legislative law, said it wasn't going to happen until. Everything would lay to rest. That's my judgment. Now, it is laid to rest.
Well, and the other thing that happened that was our unfortunate timing was the, uh. The situation down in Waycross. Where you have, you have three separate legislative districts. All encompassing a portion of the City of Waycross. And in one of those districts, there was a person who had annexed property into the city at some point in the past. You correct me if I'm wrong on the facts, Tom, but. He had approached his, and the city had spent money putting water and sewer and stuff like that out there. And he approached his, his representative. And said, hey, I'd like to de-anex out of the city. I don't want my property in the city. Can we do it through a legislative de-annexation? His. Representative said sure. And he put it on the consent agenda, and he did not speak to either of his fellow representatives, who also represented portions of the City of Waycross. And the thing went through. And the people, the city councils and the City of Waycross went ballistic, as did the other two. Members of the legislative delegation that represented the other two districts. Because essentially what had happened is the city had been screwed out of the big investment of their, of their infrastructure funding. And so, the speaker basically said, ain't nobody doing a legislation, legislative annexation this year. Until we get some legislation in place that requires. That everybody affected get notified, you know, in other words, if the city lies in three districts, every one of those people have got to be on board. They've got to be noticed. They've got to run stuff in the newspaper. That's a whole lot of other stuff they did. I, I don't remember what all the bill contained, but. That was the other thing that happened to us. We were stuck in that as well, so. But we'll get that in again, and hopefully that, that will only give us a de-annexation by Fort Valley and an annexation into Byron of Housers Mill Road. From the Two Forty Seven Connector to the driveway leading to their.
Water tower.
Water tower. Which also corresponds to the annexation line, which was established in that settlement agreement with Fort Valley. By which Fort Valley cannot annex north of that line. We cannot annex south of that line. That is the same annexation line that we used in the settlement with Warner Robins. To ensure that Warner Robins likewise cannot annex west of Housers Mill or north of that same annexation line all the way to Powersville. So, same line.
We'll call that the piece of power of the bill.
You call it the piece of Powersville.
It worked.
Um. Pretty well covers all the, all of that stuff. Is there any of the other stuff that's really easy stuff? You want to get the, um, you want to go get that, uh, diagram from your office? So we can just pass it around? Talk about that. What I had suggested on that. Alan's been working on, uh, he got some people to look at, that little area, that little triangle where they closed off the entrance into Chapman Road. Thought it would be a great place for a welcome to Byron sign. He got some bids on, in a diagram. A elevation, if you will. For the sign. It's probably a little over the lips. And I looked at it, suggested some ways that it could be pared down a little bit, still be a really nice sign. I think we eliminated the notion of a water feature. So that it didn't require all that extra maintenance, running water lines, that sort of thing. But, um. He kept wanting to get it done, and I just, I had suggested that we just put it in the budget for this year, so if. Talina, you and Derek. If Talina, you and Derek would make sure that. The, uh, welcome to Byron sign somehow gets worked in with the budget projections for this year. I think we'd already talked about it. I don't know if you put it in there.
We have numbers for it.
Numbers for it. Talina's, I mean, Tiffany's gone to get what we got, so you can have some rough numbers. And then, of course, we can pass it around, and we can figure out what everybody likes. And, uh. Get something nice down there. Get something that looks good.
While we're waiting on that drawing, let's go back to my list. One key to Green Street Railroad crossing. Everybody know where Green Street is? Where Scott Hood is? All right. Once upon a time. Green Street used to go straight through. Cross the railroad track, come out on Highway Forty-Nine over there. It shows up on all the old maps, and somewhere along the line. That got Xed out of Zerode out there. Back in Jackson Urich, uh, you remember that roadway? You could go straight through there over to Forty-Nine. And, uh, has a traffic issue. I think we need to kind of keep that in front of us as a possibility, reopening the far end of Green Street. Another great cross is there. The road would come out over there in the neighborhood of, uh, where the Yamaha Disher is. And that way, it will be continuous across the street. Over to Wall Street. Got to, you got to see the drawing to understand what I'm talking about, but once upon a time, that's how the roads worked. But we take that along the way back several nights ahead, and said, I don't know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I was just trying to knock out the easy stuff that didn't require a whole lot of thinking and debate. Rusty had also put on his list a desire to send some kind of communication to DOT about, uh. Cutting down some trees along Chapman Road there on the interstate. Is that right? Is it germane to the issue?
I wish. I'm just trying to bring it down.
Oh, okay.
That's how it used to be.
All right, so is there anything else you'd like to address on that, Rusty?
Which item are you talking about?
Your, the offerings.
We, uh, I would just like to see it cleaned up. Maybe cutting, I know Manny's been talking about cutting the trees and maybe beautifying them, but make it more appealing for somebody to get off and want to spend some time in Byron. It does, it does look much better now that we've paid somebody different to, uh, cut the grass. It, it looks much better. Shoot some, you know, some small trees, some nice flowers, and. Clean up the bridge, put some lights up or some, you know.
The problem is those pear trees without running their life, isn't that kind of where we at on that?
Most of those are already been cut down because they fell over, but the pine trees along Chapman Road. I'm assuming if the Chapman Road gets, uh, widened, it might take some of that out, isn't it?
It won't, because they have this, uh. Because the I Seventy-Five right-of-way comes down through there. In fact, they brought that up, this, uh, new term that I learned was, uh. Oh, hell, now I've forgotten again.
Daylighting?
No, it's not daylighting. It's, uh, 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 crap. Now, I forgot it again. Somebody was talking about a term a while ago, and I was going.
I've never heard that daylighting. I got an email about.
Basically, it's a term that means, uh, they're, they have to acquire right-of-way for the Chapman Road widening on one side only. Uh, rather than on both sides. Asymmetric, asymmetric acquisition of roadway is what they call it. Asymmetric roadway acquisition. What that means essentially is they're not going on the I Seventy-Five side to acquire any right-of-way to widen Chapman Road because it butts up against I Seventy-Five.
That's a scramble.
So, yeah.
Have you seen the logging crews on I Sixteen cutting down all?
Yes, I have.
So, what's so difficult about getting three trees cut down? Well, you can log fifty miles of sections on I Sixteen.
And perhaps the time is right. I mean, I, I think what Rusty wanted was just for us to authorize a kind of an official request to DOT, and I don't really have any problem with that. I mean, I know generally how they react to those things, and if they cite some policy. You know, I would suggest that maybe in our letter, we, we mentioned that we noticed that they're taking down all these trees on I Sixteen, so.
That was a big article, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars.
But they're also talking about, they're also talking about it as a safety issue for visibility and all that kind of stuff. People running off the highway, crashing their trees.
Or off the highway and hit those trees right there, just as easy.
But, and that's, that's my point. I, I don't have any problem with authorizing the letter and seeing where it goes. I mean, there's an incidental benefit to the folks that have businesses down through there. It increases their visibility.
When we inquired about it before, it was, uh. I was really trying to say, let's cut the ugly trees down and put some pretty bushes and flowers and make it prettier for them to get off. What was sent back to me was they did not authorize tree cutting for the sole purpose of daylighting a business.
Right.
So you can see it better.
Right.
And that's what Manny's perspective was, wanting to be of sense for a hotel.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think that, I think it needs to be. Needs to be dealt with in a, with wording that is different than, than that. Maybe, uh, maybe a consideration of, you know, similar safety concerns as had been noted with the I Sixteen tree cutting. And, you know, flowered up like that, and I think between the mayor and I, we could probably come up with.
Your go, two years ago, you tried to apply for a grant there of around fifty thousand dollars?
That was the other thing I was going to say, is put in the letter that we are trying to obtain those grants, and that we will undertake to do some other beautification to replace that vegetation.
That's the word you need to use, replace, not.
Yes.
We don't want to cut them down. We want to replace them with something more aesthetically.
Exactly. Anybody got any problem with such a letter? Such a course fashion?
Low growing.
We'll, we'll come up with something and flower up some, flower up some language. Work up some appropriate language there, Mr. Pressman. We don't use the word flowering of language. All right, so. You got a diagram?
That's a visual.
Did you have, uh, did we have a price?
Alan wasn't able to get a price, so I called and got, uh, we're looking at about ten thousand dollars between mason work, um, flags, landscaping, and sign.
And see, what I had suggested to Alan is that maybe all of this was not really necessary, because it looks just as nice. Without all that, and that might cut maybe, you know, twenty-five to thirty percent of the cost off, but it would still look really, really nice. The flags, I mean, y'all can make up your mind. I don't care.
You got electricity there.
Problem is, you gotta, you gotta, you know, technically speaking, if you want to be in compliance with the way the flag ought to be displayed. You got to have a light on the flag at night, or you got to have somebody that takes it down every day at dusk. And, uh, so the flags might be one of those things. We keep or not keep, but that was the basic, did you?
The gas station.
I have a copy of that.
Yeah, so that was the.
Is what we're talking about.
That was the elevation that was done, the suggestion that was done. That's the one that you heard about floating around. That was it. But there's no.
The DOT okay not to put the sign out there, because they had a release, didn't they?
And we had him out here not too long ago, and just showed him that as well.
Actually showed him the location. It was a good meeting.
So.
Spend the money, let's do it better.
Well, there's a budget man over here. We, we didn't, we didn't raise the mileage rate this year to get you us rubbing the Byron sign, so. Might have to do it within the existing constraints of the available cash flow. So. All right, um. I guess we can get into some of these other more difficult issues now. I want to let Tom be able to get out of here. The main reason I had, wanted to make sure Tom was here today was because we have. I know that there has been some private conversation about, and some public conversation about, and I know we had a big meeting. At City Hall about, uh, maybe a year and a half ago, about the notion of, uh, department heads. Being employees that are not covered by the typical, uh, personnel policy that the City of Byron now has in effect. But would in effect become employees who were employed at the pleasure of mayor and council. And I know that Rusty, you kind of modified that notion a little bit about counseling, documenting, suspending, termination, but that. That's essentially what our present personnel policy does. The difficulty is how to go about, uh, we don't have, we don't have a city manager. So we don't have a person invested with the authority over department heads, uh, who could perform those tasks. Leaving it up to Mayor and Council to do it anyway, and none of us have enough contact with any department head on a regular enough basis. To honestly and truthfully, effectively evaluate their performance. So that's been kind of the weakness in our policy, and why I had suggested perhaps we incorporate some other things, like, you know, public complaints and. Employee satisfaction surveys and that sort of thing.
That was kind of my concern. Who evaluates? Who documents? Not just fire somebody, but who actually recommends they get a raise? Who actually recommends an award for them for something they've done? Who is the person that takes care of that? I'm the new kid on the block, so I'm, I'm shooting for answers, or at least, uh, let's get together and talk about it.
Well, and I, the, the one thing I wanted to adjust, address was just if we went to a situation where we make mayor and council. You know, they're, they're subject to hiring and firing, uh, by the action of Mayor and Council, and answerable solely to Mayor and Council. We really haven't solved your problem, because we're still in the same position we're in before. Unless we have, unless we want to go to a full-time mayor, in which case, there would be a full-time mayor who could have that responsibility. Now, that's a thought, or in conjunction with our rewrite of our charter, if we change our former government to a city manager former government. Then you institute a situation where you've got somebody who's in that position. The main reason I wanted Tom, anyway, was just to address, because I think I'm right about this, but I want to make sure, and I was going to let Tom address it. I'm thinking that even if we, if we put it on the October agenda, and we voted as of October to make all department heads. Subject to hiring and firing by council, answerable strictly to Mayor and Council, um, for their job. I don't believe it would affect the status of any current department head. Um, I think they would all, because they're already vested under the personnel policies that we got. Um, I think they would all, because they're already vested under the personnel policies that we got, it would only begin to come into effect as each new department head was hired when either somebody took a job somewhere else or resigned or retired.
I've, I've been through this with another county and that's exactly right and there, you know, you got, you don't take away vested rights.
Until that, that person is replaced and then you start a whole new thing with them if that's what you want to do.
Right, so, you know, it might be, it might be that the answer would be wrapped up in what we're asking Tom to do in a rewrite of the charter.
The manager?
City manager or full-time mayor, uh, you know, take the big.
Control the Personnel Committee.
The Personnel Committee is made up of three members of council who don't have time to sit around and watch what y'all do all the time.
We started doing evaluations, which everybody's aware, Mike's aware of it, you know, because I didn't feel easy, it's how, how do I evaluate, evaluate you? Uh Derek, Talina, Tiffany, JD, you, you know, because we're not in day-to-day interaction, that's not our responsibility, you know, so.
We figured this out the second time we met to do this. The first year, we found it difficult, we devised some kind of a form to follow, the second year, Mike and I, same thing, so what are you saying right now?
Yeah, I mean, this is.
I agree with you on that part of it.
Well, last year you, you decided for me to do their evaluation.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Which I'm glad to do and it probably would be easier if y'all received communications, since obviously people are receiving communications, people are doing bad things or good things, if they would let me know through some little letter, something that says, hey, I got this complaint, hey, I got this kudo about this department head, then that would make it a little bit easier. I interact with them every day, almost often, so I can do a lot of the stuff. But when it comes to knowing whether somebody did something really good or really bad, I'm probably not gonna know, just like y'all wouldn't know. Well, you might cause someone to talk to you or you might because someone talked to you, but if y'all don't bring that here, it's really unfair to the department.
I think the only kudos I've got in the past, well, since I've been elected, was from Laura.
Yeah.
When she get, she got an award, she sent out something, but in the Budget Committee meetings, I'm not on the, that committee, but I attended some of them, I asked Wesley, I don't see in here a raise for you, how, you know, how does that process work? And he said, well, that's up to you guys, the council, but I didn't see any of that this year.
I make the recommendations based on evaluations.
Like I say, I'm, I'm trying to learn all I can.
Well, and, and we may need to devise, you know, that's the other problem, is, is the forms are great, I mean, I think we should probably devise a form. And we, we've been through this kind of thing a couple of times where we have some sort of allegations and it catches fire and people are calling council members and they're saying these things, this person, that person ought to be fired or disciplined or whatever. But we have to act on something, somebody's, you, all of us have to remember that ultimately every department head we have who is, who has any kind of personnel action taken against them has the right to a hearing. And at that hearing, somebody got to come in and put up their hand and say, so help me God, under oath, and swear that what they're about to testify to is the truth. And every time you get to that point, suddenly any willingness for anybody to show up evaporates, there is nobody who ever comes. And that's why I suggested that the forms that we devise ought to have to be sworn to under oath when somebody comes in. They call you, they call me, go down and see Derek, he's got a form for you, tell you, fill it out.
See, that's where, and I don't think I made this statement before, is if somebody calls me about a situation, I'll, you know, I will send them to Derek. I mean, you know, again, because you know, you got to verify that if somebody's taken up this person or this person or whatever, you know. And that's what we need to do, is we need to send them up here because there is a, a policy, am I correct, for complaints and concerns and.
Well, it has to get investigated, that's what I'm saying, if somebody has to start that investigation with a, basically what I said, just a written statement. Because if they're not willing to be there at the end of the investigation, if they just want to put a bug in somebody's ear and at the end of the day, there's not going to be somebody to come and testify under oath at a hearing, then the whole investigation is wasted time. You know, now, if it's somebody that says, you know, I found out that Wesley's stealing money from his budget. Well, now, that's the sort of thing, if you did an audit of the budget, you wouldn't necessarily need that person to come and testify because you'd have other stuff that you could put into evidence to show that, yeah, this money's disclaring, Mr. uh, Mr. Cannon, you want to explain where it's going, you know, whatever. But most of the time, it's going to be something that requires somebody to show up and testify and, you know, they need to understand that at the front end. And instead of council members running around trying to figure stuff out, we just need to turn it over to somebody who, you know, does the investigation.
I've got a couple of complaints on, on my cover before and not many, whatever, once in a while it comes up. And to follow the policy, you know, I say, I'd be happy to discuss this with the firefighter involved, but I really need you to come in and give me a written statement. Um, because I can't proceed any further in, in a solid way unless I get, oh, I'm not coming in to give, I'm not doing a written statement, I didn't put it in writing, who's letting me out? Well, who is this? Well, I mean, you don't have to know who this is. Well, I'm not going to take an anonymous complaint, that could be anything. I'll still discuss it with my firefighter and see what their side of the story is in case it comes up again. But they have to be willing to put their name up in the front of it and to uh sign in and attest that this is what happened.
And I'm not saying that because I want anybody singled out, it's, my concern is at some point in the process, you know, if there's a hearing, and again, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but if there's a hearing, you know, somebody got it, they're gonna have to be called as a witness. And, you know, if they're not willing to tell you who they are at the front, then they sure aren't gonna be willing to show up and testify in a personnel hearing. And if they don't show up in a personnel hearing, then, you know, it's a, it's, it's a colossal waste of resources, is what it amounts to.
I fully understand what you're talking about, back previous lifetime, the uh, and I handle grievances, unfair legal practices. You'd be surprised how many people, people shat them at the rooftops, but it comes time to go to the chief with it, you know, they're hiding in the corner, they, they won't come back.
As an employee, I don't like that, because, you know, people can spread the whole kind of field they want to and when it comes time to.
It's the truth of it, you know. I like those hearings. It does settle things.
Well, I, the long and short of it is I don't really know, I guess, at some point, I don't know whether we need to address the question of the form of government first or whether we need to address the issue of creating a better way for Derek to know things, like, for instance, I, you know, that whole Hurricane Irma experience, me trying to find out when Georgia Power could get to us. I didn't, you know, my, my whole effort was not designed to try to force anybody at Georgia Power to come and get us turned on. All I wanted was some inkling of when they could get here and turn us on, because nobody, everybody that I talked to was perfectly willing to deal with the hardships because they knew everybody else was dealing with the hardships. But they wanted, it's hard to plan when all you can get on the George Power website is, we've got a billion three hundred thousand people without power and we're working our way just as fast as we can to get your power turned back on. I mean, that's, do I go down to, do I go down and buy a week's worth of crap at Freshway and every bottle of water they got or, or, you know, can I expect to get back for two days? So it's, you know, sort of the same issue here, how long do we think we need to get by? Whether we need to expend the effort on creating a new way or, or additional layers of stuff for Derek to consider? Or do we need to look at the charter change and then, because we're probably gonna do it either way, we're gonna have to consider something either way, but if you have a city manager, that's somebody who can assist you, just presumably will have somebody who's either been doing a similar job for a long time or doing a city manager job or what had, who could also suggest some ways to go about doing that. And of course, I'm, I'm becoming a strong man because of looking at what other cities do, because I ain't a lot of sense in wasting the time reinviting the wheel over and over and over again. So what's your, what's y'all thinking?
I think this. I think this, I think we need to resolve the form of government first, first charter. And then, in doing that, I've, I've looked at it over the years a whole bunch of times. The city, and again, I appreciate your point, looking at what other, other cities have done. City of Athens, Clark County have a unique approach to it, they just said, there is hereby created a civil service for, for these bodies. Mayor and council, or what do they call themselves, now commissioners, will hire such people as are appropriate to do these jobs. And of course, in transit and all of that, there's a personnel policy that meets, you know, all the requirements of the Constitution. We respect the fairness, notice, the best in the rights of people to be heard. We've run into that two or three times here in the last twenty-five, thirty years, that, you know, we, you face some kind of litigation over that. I know I was sued one time early on, and the question was, who's the boss? Judge Bill Blanks, who was Special Security in matter in Peach County, signed the case and Bill ruled I was the boss. One, I appreciate that, but it was so ambiguous, reading the charters and all the rules and regulations. I had to figure out who was on first kind of thing. That was, and it went beyond his peer, code Peach County, but the plaintiff was James Barba, he and I were best friends, we just had to have a decision on something.
Did he put in that full-time job?
Hmm? Rusty, I, I would if I would have been younger.
But I think, uh, I think Derek's point's well taken too, he kind of, the, the problem with us is not many people ever call us and say, you know, Mike, I, I just want to let you know that Fire Chief of yours, he's a great guy, he helped me do this, he helped me do that, or that Police Chief of yours is a wonderful feller. You know, those folks down there in the administrative office, man, those are the most helpful people I've ever met in my entire life. Those aren't the people that ever called us, people that call us, the people that go in there and they're mad about their taxes or something and somebody doesn't respond the way they want them to respond, or JD has come and told them to put out their burning barrel, or Wesley has stopped their son for speeding for the nighttime uh through the city of Byron or one of his officers, those are the people that wind up calling us, you know, and uh, and they, they want to complain that, you know, whatever they complain about, but that's what, that's what, those are the people we hear from, so it's unfortunate that the stuff we know or get told by people out there is always unfavorable stuff and.
Since I've been elected, I've got two good calls and probably two thousand bad ones.
There you go.
And I've got one from Tiffany and one from Derek.
And that's the uh, that's the problem, uh, is that if we have a, if we directed them to a particular point of contact and to go out a complaint sheet with all the information and that sort of thing, then those that have merit will move forward and those that really are, were just bending tend to, you know, be resolved at that point in time, I think.
Well, I think there's a, just a complaint against an officer or a city employee other than a department head, y'all should send that person to the department.
Well, I think that's the way it already works now.
Well, that's the way it should work, it's the kind of, it don't work like that. But I have the same feeling that JD has, that if there ever is a complaint uh against any of my police officers or any of my people at all, I have the only one that should be able to, can look into that complaint. Derek can't do it, y'all certainly can't do it, uh, so, you know, we need that opportunity too, when it comes to placing on department heads, crown whoever you want to crown, that, that matter of me.
Well, that's why I wasn't even addressing complaints against employees because that's a department head, I mean, you know, anybody, anybody on council who gets a complaint against an employee. And I, and I know that, some of that recently, I mean, we had a couple of such complaints, I know Tiffany has resolved uh one fairly recently and uh, and there have been those and so. I hope that's what's happening, is that those are being directed to the appropriate department head, uh, that's what happens when I get them, but.
If y'all had a fire department head in the last several years, did that come up?
No, who's what, no.
Chief that I know of.
Department heads? We got more resigning.
Well, yeah.
You resolved with the department.
Maybe.
Yeah, we, we, we resolved the department for economic and other reasons and we, and we had a, a public works director resign.
And then we had the, the other guy.
Bollinger?
Oh, yeah, well, that was just, we just dissolved that position, didn't we?
Well, I was the only that showed up to terminate, nobody else here.
Oh, I didn't know, I can think of really, we just. We eliminated his job.
Yeah. Who is his hands, who has the final decision making authority to, to fire a department head or to discipline a department head?
I think it's Mayor and Council and then of course, we have a provision, if the, if the appeal and we appoint, we have a lawyer.
Who?
Do we have one of them?
Yeah. Judge Lee would be true.
Judge Lee does, yeah, 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 handles it from that point, uh, if there's an appeal, so.
Then you mentioned one other thing, you could do that, a call in, a compliment to somebody, particularly to this fire, ask them to put it in light and put it in a personnel file because you get a lawsuit down the road and they want your personnel file, you want, you want it to fairly reflect the experience of that, that officer or that, that department head, that's important. You don't want the only thing, it's bound to be one bad thing you did over the years.
That's true, that's a good point. Because that is the, that is the thing, that is the way now it's everybody, and I see in the routine DUI cases, DUI lawyers subpoena the officer's entire personnel line and it's not privileged, they can get in them. And the purpose of that is not only to look at his training history, that's primarily the reason they use, is to see that he's properly trained and he knows how to operate the Intox, blah, 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 uh, but they also look for those incidents where uh he may have been disciplined for, you know, whatever. And uh, so, that's a good point, Tom, thank you. Anybody else got anything on the, on the at-will, should we, is there any action we need to take other than waiting, as Larry suggested, to reconsider our charter position?
Let me ask this, it's too big a question. I'm new here, but I'm, see, you're my son, city manager and city administrator, can anybody tell me the difference?
City manager has the authority to actually direct the actions of department heads. He is actually the boss, boss of the department, city administrator essentially coordinates the budgets, coordinates the departments, but does not have the authority to tell any department head what to do. Is that, is that, Tom, can you think of any other good way to differentiate that? That help you, Joseph?
Some, some places use an interchange.
That's what I'm saying, you know, that's why I was wondering, because when I was, yeah, uh, they were asking, have you seen this? I said, yeah, city administrator, that's what they call it. So, I was thinking the city administrator is sent to my city manager, he doesn't know what they're using.
That's right.
Well, by, by the way.
He had a little deal about some benches outside City Hall, I didn't know that we really need to get into in depth with it, but I don't have any, anybody got any problem with the idea of putting a couple of park benches out there for folks? Uh, I didn't see, probably we just need to uh cover it in the budget, how about we just put it down for the budget leaders, is that alright Derek? What's that, put that in your budget, the administrative budget, that sounds like the right place for it.
I don't think I would mention her name, but somebody came to the city council meeting one time, right after I got awake and they said something about, man, it's a long way from the parking lot to the inside of the building, y'all need something to sit on outside, something to take a break. And now my mother's actually on the oxygen, she came, I don't know, she's walking all the way to the building, something to sit on.
Well, hopefully she don't need to go to the House of County Courthouse. And then I noticed that Rusty had on his list the appearance and condition of the recycling center, which I, I think that property is owned by Federal Bass, is that right? Who also happens to be running for council now.
It's a mess.
It is a mess, doesn't look all that great. Looks better since the cardboard went away. But I don't know exactly how to, how to address that, other than maybe asking Federal to clean it up.
It was the county, the county managed the recycling.
Well, I'm sure they rented from him.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know.
I was talking to Tiffany about maybe if there was any grant money that he could apply for, or we could help him out. And I think the way the rules are, he could qualify, and to get some of that money to fix it because of his recycling center. So if he gets elected, he's going to be able to buy all.
Yep, I understand that. I don't know that he's got time.
I do go by there real regular, and throw in the recycling stuff, and it does look a little bit better now it's picked up. And this outside of the building.
Yeah, and the overall building really uses bristen up. And I'm not sure he could use the grant money type thing to do that. But anyway, just thought I'd mention that, just thought it might be, I don't know, I guess our, if our code guy thought it was in bad enough shape, he'd already be on him about it, so.
I thought because it was in our city park, the recycling center, if you're about to see it, and it just had, had the appeal that's filed today, even, it's all outside of there.
I understand, publicly, we cannot do anything on public property.
That's private property, yeah.
Private property, he's got a lease agreement with the recycling center.
Peach County, so, it seems like Peach County would, you know, they could put some money in it, or, I don't know how that works, so. They could do, well, they could, yeah, that's true too.
And they moved the, that's why they moved, the dumpsters were such a problem with the cardboard, people using the dumpsters to put other stuff in. And we discovered what was happening. We thought people were just dumping stuff out, and we discovered what was happening, so they came to get the cardboard dumpsters. Those guys were cleaning dumpsters out, dumping crap that was in there on the ground beside that before they emptied the dumpsters. So that's where the other trash and stuff was coming from, so.
They had to sign up and take all the cardboard to the fire station.
Right, so they moved those dumpsters to the fire station.
So the. And there are little quarter, quarter load dumpster in the fire station, load, so, load of cardboard, we couldn't put garbage in.
Well, I think, yeah, they got the wrong fire station.
Plus, you know, the podcast will leave too, since from, you know, starter recycling, always management, I don't know, I'm sure they had some good data. I mean, cut down the traffic over there, I again, can't say for sure, but.
All right, y'all want to talk about streetlights? We've had some interest in streetlights in some subdivisions where they're not now, we've struggled with how to do that. And I was thinking, maybe, I looked at our P and Z ordinances, maybe Joseph and Tiffany, y'all could help me out. I can't remember whether our ordinances actually require that streetlights be incorporated in a subdivision, and can we do that? Joseph?
I'll have to check on that, huh?
I don't think it's in our ordinance now, that was one of the requirements, I remember with, one of the subdivisions that we were asking them to put them in, and I think it come up then, that it was not actually in our ordinance.
That's what I seem to remember.
And I think it was going to be looked at, try and look at incorporating something, but I do not believe it's in the.
We could add to it, am I correct?
Correct, that's my understanding.
I mean, because, because, didn't we change many years ago, you do a subdivision, we wanted to curb it better?
That's what I was going to say, I was just putting it out there, because it seems to me that we're going to have these requests come more often when we have a subdivision, people get in there, they buy the house, and then later they realize, you know, it's not something you really, when you're looking at the house, I can't say that I've ever driven into a subdivision and paid attention as to whether it was lit, you know, or not, unless I'm driving there tonight. But I suspect that's what happens, we can get in there, and then they realize they've got no streetlights, and then they want them, and who do they gun to? They gun to us. And it becomes a problem for us, because, you know, it's hard, it's really difficult to go back out to the bag and do it, as opposed to doing it, so I'm just trying to see if any council member had any opposition.
Well, I think if that's something we want to go, I mean, we could add to it going forward, that ordinance. But I think you got to be specific on what the definition of streetlights are, because what is the, right here?
Melasbach?
Melasbach, you know, they got pole lights, but they don't put enough lights in, because, you know, I think that was one of their quests in that subdivision about streetlights. So I think you need to make clear what is the definition, that we want streetlights if it has so many looms, so forth and so forth.
There should be some sort of standards in there. I was going to say, Tom, have you seen, have you drafted such a thing yet?
No, no, but it makes sense, and I think you can.
Can't we leave it up to Flint and Georgia Power? They do the standards, I mean, Hawks Ridge was the one that Tiffany was talking about, where Billy asked previous developers to put in streetlights, but of course, it's mandatory. Well, now Jerry Reynolds has gone in, and the streetlights are not actually in there. It's a trial, Derek, that we took over last week, it was twelve streetlights from Flint that they put in. They made a recommendation based off of.
You should also understand that when we take over the roads and everything, we all, am I not correct? We also take that responsibility in from that later.
We did.
So, I just want to make sure everybody understood that.
I guess what I was wondering is that, I don't know if there's a standard for how many, how far apart they're located. You know, I know each one throws off a certain amount of light, which is why I think they have a distance standard between lights.
Well.
Just, can you check on Tom, and just, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure there are other cities that have that incorporated in their, in their planning and zoning and planning requirements.
In our subdivision, the streetlights where the power box is. Where, however, the part of the fleet that power box is, the way.
Of course, that's underground, that's underground wiring, you have that.
Yeah. Let's see, also, you know, Mike, is, I know if you brought in the commercial business, now, I don't know about Byron, uh, for the buildings or whatever, I know always got to submit a lighting package. You know, with the right looms, it has to be signed off from the local P and Z on it, you know, but sometimes that, good example, they want X number of looms, good example, like when I did in Apula, I had to cut the looms down because the airport was on the other side of there, so. I mean, I know for commercial, most communities assist cities require a lighting diagram under the block. The same that's electrical, but I don't know if that could be interjected with, if I'm developing, I'm building thirty, forty homes, you know.
Well, I'm sure there's, I'm just thinking there's probably be a standard that the subdivisions generally have. And I would think that subdivisions in, you know, some of the metro areas probably have those things incorporated or something good. You just check it out, Tom, get back with us on it, give us an idea of what, we could, we could make something, we could. It's easier to take something somebody's already written, that has passed muster, and revise a little bit so it fits for us. And then it is to create something that's fresh, so.
Hopefully, you can, residential, you submit to the authority what you want to do.
Yeah.
They come back to you with your draft.
In what?
I made a decision one time, over a streetlight, I think it was light pollution, there was a little LED control.
Well, a lot of, a lot of communities require stewardess to cut down on the lighting of streetlights.
It just replaced some lights in, just to go, and they were a type of light peach or pink color, and it broadcasted all over the road, but now they've replaced them with the LED lights, which is a much wider, bright light, but it shines like straight diamonds, ten, twelve, twelve.
That was one of the benefits.
That light up here is good.
That was one of the benefits of high pressure soot in the air, was the peach lights you're talking about, is because it broadcasts light without shadows. All right, um, city vehicle use. I don't know that we have a, I don't know that we actually have a policy. I know we have, I think we've had department heads decide who in their department could take vehicles home, and who could not take vehicles home. And I know, we, where we do have some seeing folks out on the vehicles at times when it just didn't seem like it was associated with being city business at times, so, I just thought we might take a look at that. I had Derek pull, and he provided to me a couple of different cities' vehicle use policies. And some of them are very brief, and some of them are very comprehensive. Dade County's is pretty comprehensive and has some good definitions in it, and almost everywhere it says, make it Dade County, you could just take that out, the city of Byron, and it would probably work pretty well. It does about what you'd expect it to do, it allows department heads pretty much unencumbered use of vehicles, including the transport of family members, if they're within a certain radius of the city. It does not allow, you know, it wouldn't allow travel to Atlanta for personal business, it wouldn't allow travel, you know, to extended places for personal business. It would allow that travel for, you know, city-related business. I think JD teaches some stuff at Fire Academy sometimes, it would cover that. Obviously Wesley lives outside, I think that radius that they had on Makingville was thirty miles, and that probably pushes about the limit of where he lived, pretty close to it, if not. So we got some little adjustments we have to make there. But overall, it's, I'm just going to suggest we look at it, and I think it helps in the long run with liability issues and that sort of thing. I think, pretty much, the department heads, though, overall, I mean, you don't have many, many officers taking vehicles home now.
Everybody has to take coal. Everybody pretty much has to take coal.
Yeah, so, but they don't use it for that many, go straight home, straight to work.
The only people that would use it after hours would be people that was on call.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, so it's.
And I do encourage, say, if officers are, especially the ones that live in town, if they need to go to the bank on a Saturday morning, if they go to the gym on a Saturday morning, or maybe the evening, take the car, it's more, it's just more visibility for us. You know, if a car is sitting at the gym at eleven o'clock at night on a Saturday night, a good chance at the gym, they could have a problem. But no, grocery store trips, not the only time my kids ever rode in my car was, if they was coming to the Battle of Byron, which, you know, happened by Merrill Main Street, stuff like that.
Yep, I'm not saying it's something we have to do, it just, and a lot of it might be alleviated by somebody that kind of phoned saying, hey, why is so-and-so at the gym, and he's calling on Saturday evening?
So, called me, I was going.
So, you know, that might, might handle some of it, but it's something to think about. I just, I don't know if you want to do it or not. I was going to take this thing, kind of draft something up, and just submit it for everybody to circulate, submit it by time, let them look at it, and just see what y'all think, if we can act more or if we not.
The reason, the reason I put it on my list is because I have had some people call, saying he's having pictures of something. And when I went to inquire about it, I didn't find a policy. Derek, they, you know, a list of everything on a CD, and I looked through the policy on all the cities, you know, they know the answer, so that's why I put it on my list.
Yeah, and I agree with you, I mean, there's probably not, I don't recall that we have a specific policy, an operator policy. Yeah, a general operator policy requires, you know, if you're going to drive a city vehicle, you have to meet these requirements. But I don't think we have anything that, that addresses the wider use of vehicles, so that, you know, not that anybody would abuse it, but, you know, if you know what the rules are, then it's a whole lot easier.
So, because it was at the G O, okay, on Sunday, or the G O, it's out of the city, it was. That was Brian Hunter, and he asked me about that, and well, Brian Hunter's position as Lieutenant of Patrol, he's on call twenty-four hour basis this week, just like I am. And usually after he leaves that gym in One Robbins, because he is on call, I do ask, especially the ones that are on call, lieutenants and captains, if they are going to do something like that during the week, close by, in close proximity, take your car, that way if you are called in, you don't have to go back home, take your car, then come to work. Usually after Brian leaves the gym in One Robbins, he goes to North Peach Park, he walks for three or four miles out there. So the car is in North Peach Park, right after his field trip, which I think is good for us, it's good for visibility, and it's good for any criminal that's coming to that park, so they will maybe have a little break in the cars today, because we have had a lot of problems with entering others in that park. Byron Police Corps is in there, the corner being broken too, so.
Yeah, and the other, about a year ago, there was a city car at El Bronco's, eating dinner one night.
Police, police court?
Well, it is.
Police court? For instance, I can't, a year ago, I would begin to understand that. But for instance, this is kind of like along those lines, what you just said, Wesley. Dade County has this thing called Exclusive Assignment Unrestrictive, which is defined as the assigned and unrestricted use of a, in this case, it'd be a city of Byron vehicle, on and within the city of Byron area, Ampeach County area, assigned to limited specific positions in law enforcement, whose response is tied to urgent and immediate needs for law enforcement or public safety duties and responsibilities are essential. Probably included in a firefighting event.
There's some people that need cars for certain days, and some that don't. If you don't have a handle on, unless I get called back out, my car is collecting dust, I just refuse to drive anywhere other than back and forth home, unless I'm called back out. As soon as you do, you're going to hit a deer where I would be, or you're going to have somebody rear end you. That's not going to happen on Sunday afternoon while I'm on the phone.
This is just my personal thinking. As an elective official, if somebody in the city asks me a question, I owe them an answer, if they'd like to answer or not, that's up to them.
And in fact, what I said a while ago, if that question comes up like last year with El Bronco, come ask me immediately, and I'll find you an answer for that person, or I can, or I can link me up with that person, and I can answer it. But if I don't get asked, then I, I don't want to.
I think if you look to see if they're, if the policy, they could have been in a case in Eagle City. I don't know if there's a yes or no answer, I attempted to look, but I didn't find an answer, that's why it's on my list. I keep a running list in my book, every, if you, I don't care who it is, if somebody asks me a question, I write it down. And if I can find an answer, I keep it.
But if it concerns.
Well, sometimes the answer though is call the chief, and they can answer that question. If I don't, if I don't, because I'm the one, the only one that, or the department head is the only one that can deal with an issue with an employee, if you are asked as a councilman, your first thought should be, Wesley, let me call him, I had this cell phone, let me find the answer for you. And this is why, if we have someone doing wrong, we need to correct it. But if I'm, if I'm not asked what this employee is doing at El Bronco in One Robbins on Sunday evening lunch, then I don't know there's a problem. I mean, there might be a legitimate reason, let me find that out. I can find the answer, you can get back to the citizen, you can put the citizen with me, and then, and then we can, we can explain it. Right or wrong, but if I don't, I mean, it's not much, it's not too about it, it's, it's not worth, worth dealing with, it's not worth dealing with deals, it's not worth dealing with that, the way I would, so, just, just ask, that's all I want.
Anything else on that? All right, the only other things on my list had to do with two things I've just been thinking about. I had a question about a seminar that I went to this year. And I got thinking that perhaps, I know that we have a budget for council education and travel. And it's really never been an issue, because basically all of us just have gone to GMA. it's really never been an issue, 'cause basically all of us just have gone to GMA in the wintertime and in the summertime every year and it's been budgeted and what we budgeted has covered that. Uh, I went to the Neil Knox Institute primarily because it was, uh, it's required training to obtain the next level of certifications, uh, as a city councilperson, I couldn't, that was, I couldn't get the next level of certification without going to the Neil Knox Institute, so, uh, that's why I went there. So I had, um, I had, and Mike, of course, never goes, hardly ever, he's never spent any of the training budget really to go to, go to these things and, uh, and, uh, he's gone to some training, uh, but, but he doesn't stay in the hotels and all that kind of stuff, so, you know, there's always been that, but it, it occurred to me that, that we have some interest in, uh, some further education stuff and perhaps what we need to do is, um, look at our, our travel policy a little bit. I don't, I don't ever wanna get into the situation where we're having to meet this council to say, yes, you can go to this training or no, you can't go to this training. Uh, what I'd like to do is maybe look at doing a policy that essentially says, you know, these are the types of training you can attend, if you get a GMA credit for it, it's, you know, allowable, if it gets the city some kind of additional points or consideration on a grant or whatever, it's allowable, because you wanna be there, then you wanna be there and it's for your own identification, then you pay for it. Uh, and maybe just setting an individual council member budget, instead of doing a big budget, just have five, five travel, six travel budgets essentially. Uh, and then, you know, as long as you meet the parameters, you travel to what you wanna travel to and when you spend your budget, you're done for the year, traveling, something like that. Uh, that way it makes everybody sort of think about what's, what's important and, uh, what they're doing, help me, um, and it alleviates those kind of questions like I got, so.
The GMA training that we go to Savannah?
Yeah.
Do we get points if we go to a different GMA training somewhere?
You get credit for the classes, that's what I'm talking about, class credit. If you, now, just because GMA's offering a...
A training workshop.
A training or a workshop doesn't mean they get credit for it from there. Like that, there's a workshop that GMA just had about, something about police or something and there was one they were doing somewhere else. But it's, when they call it a workshop, when they call it a workshop, usually that means it's an informational meeting of some sort, but you will not get any, uh, training credit for being there. You get informational credit, is what I'm saying. Uh, when you sign up for those classes, you go to a GMA, you get six hours or three hours of training course credit that's applicable to a certification level.
That's just forty-two hours, it's in span.
And that's, um, that's what I'm talking about. If you get that, I think the, uh, I remember when, you know, we were in that meeting with, uh, Adrian the other day and she said something about, um, how points can be awarded on your grant, so maybe if you were talking about, you know, if we were already a designated G I C H community, we would've got extra points on our, on our grant application. If we were already a plan first city, we would've got additional points. I know Adrian said something about none of us have been to any training, particular training on, except for myself and Tiffany and I know somebody else that did. I think the problem was it was somebody who's no longer on council, 'cause several of us had gone over the years to the, to the, uh, what's the training you had to go to to be on the city vehicle?
DDA.
The DDA training, see that, that counts too, does that, but...
I'm signed up today. Uh, getting, uh, social media on show.
So, that's what I'm saying, so if it gives you some kind of, you know, that sort of thing, gives the city some kind of credit or points towards something, I don't have any problem with it. Uh, I'm not saying we have to do it, I'm just saying it's a thought, just so that we don't have to get into those questions and we don't have to, you know, if there's a policy that says if it meets these requirements, you can go. When you're out of money, if you wanna go, you're gonna have to pay for it for yourself or you gotta kind of plan your travel accordingly within your budget so that you can get what you want to get and you don't wind up spending three quarters of the travel budget and the other four councilmen or the mayor doesn't spend any money as the payment. Yeah, I don't think anybody travels a lot, I just know that I had that week long training and there was a question about it, so I just figured this might be a way to deal with that so that we don't have that issue in the future. You had your hand up and I covered whatever it was you were gonna say?
I just mentioned I have two hundred and forty forms for the budget, so all the department heads have one plus two for y'all. Each individual council member, each one of them, I just want some, I'm not gonna put, like I said with the department heads, I'm not gonna put numbers in travel and education program without those forms back. If the forms don't come back, that'll ease you much.
Well, here's the only problem that I see with that, is that, um, we already know every year that GMA is gonna take place in January and July are our chances. I don't know, for instance, I had no idea when the Neil Knox Institute was scheduled. I was gonna take it last year. Well, yeah, but, uh, but it's only once a year, so you're only gonna know about it when it's time for you to take it or if you wanna go ahead and take it for some reason. There's no reason for anybody to take it before they've gotten, you know, their seventy-two hour level.
We will schedule it for those people who are part of the...
They, if they know. You need to also know when the other trainings are, uh, because GMA offers one in April every year, I think, and the autumn one in August when they're doing that. So, you know, depending on what people are willing to take it, depending on what the guy, they, you know, helps them figure things out, that's all I'm saying. If, if the form will accommodate that, I don't have any, I don't have any problem with that. Just needs to be budgeted for it, that's all I'm saying. Um, anybody got any further comments about that, thoughts, suggestions?
Wanted to hear that, Ken. Just planning it.
Um, press policy, that was the other thing I wanted to address. I know that we, uh, from time to time, we have people who contact us in the press and I ain't got nobody, no problem with anybody saying anything they want. When you're called by a newspaper person, what I do have a problem with is when the article comes out in the paper and it sounds like one person did a whole bunch of stuff and the other four councilpersons and the mayor had nothing to do with it. And I've seen that on a couple of occasions. We had this recent thing that appeared in the paper last week where, you know, a picture of you and the grill was there and that's how you're having a problem with, but then the thing, the blur of under it made it sound like the city had a few hot dogs and threw them out there and you went and grilled them and, you know, there wasn't any mention of the fire department that slaved over the pots and pots of beans that they made, there wasn't even mention of anybody that showed up, you said for the center members who showed up and served them. And I don't know why nobody made a call from the paper to anybody to ask about that, but my suggestion is that we, in the future, if we're gonna release something that's of interest to the community that we have done as a city, needs to go through a person in the city that's responsible for doing press releases. To bet them, send them out. If a reporter calls you and asks a question, I think we need a policy that says it's incumbent upon you as a council member to make damn sure that they call everybody else who has information about it.
How did this article? I know it came to, I guess Vicki, but I didn't see it out there.
How she did the picture of you. Honestly, we all presumed that you sent it to her because it was the one picture taken of you.
I didn't take the picture because I was...
And they only, they were put on the, they were put on the council's Facebook page, I guess, so she could've downloaded it from there. But she had to get information from somewhere too and she got information from somewhere to put it, 'cause nobody was just out there talking about where the food was, 'cause I know where it was. So, you know, I, I just think we need a policy about releasing that kind of stuff and we need a policy for the council people individually to be sure that when they're talking to the press, that they are saying, yes, I was involved in that along with Councilman Dorsey and Councilman Jumlee and the mayor, whose idea it was, and you need to call them and get more information because they know stuff about it that I don't know. You know, I mean, it's the sort of thing that, you know, we just, it avoids the appearance of somebody, it just avoids the appearance of somebody manipulating the local papers, is what it does. And I mean, I, I don't mean for it to sound that way, but there've been a few articles in the last year that, you know, seemed to be awfully slanted toward the idea that somebody did something and nobody else had anything to do with it, so. And it may be just me getting something off my chest and y'all may not wanna take shit about it, but, and so, I just think we oughta, oughta have something to address. Um, and I don't believe that, you know, we need to have, I don't know about a media spokesperson, but, you know, we're not big enough, we don't need a person like Macon has, you know, Macon has, Jack Ellis had somebody follow him around with a camera all the time, you know, that was, that was kinda crazy, but, uh, who was Rob Lyle, used to follow Jack Ellis around with the camera all the time. But that was the act of us, so, anyway. We just feel like we oughta, when we do something good that needs to be known about, whether it be the thing in the community center, I realize nobody wanted to put out a press release about the community center thing, because we weren't looking for recognition for that. We were just trying to do something nice for the people over there who went without power, lost their food, you know, would like a hot meal and had just had their power restored. I get it. I don't know how or why, but it showed up, showed up. I agree wholeheartedly with Talia's email to the editor regarding that issue, um, and it just made me think about the fact that it probably would be a good idea if we, uh, either have a person who's responsible for notifying the press of that sort of stuff and, and/or creating a press release and commensurate that. Sometimes those of us on council get calls about stuff and we need to remember that, you know, nothing happens without at least two other council people being involved. Nothing happens without at least two other council people being involved. Nobody on this council does anything by themselves, period. So, that's all.
My comment's very, and, uh, it's always been sort of informal, but it worked really well. The, uh, and people not talking about it, you got, uh, I, I expect to receive everybody when something happens, if there is a death involved, we call that a capital, capital is the obvious. And if there's another group of things that happen, they reflect a little well on the city, we call it a bluebell accident. I don't want to jack a reporter or bluebell report anytime something like that, anytime something happens that affects the city. And, uh, I've always, in the last twelve, fifteen years, reported, uh, I had, uh, police chief, the spokesman on these instances where the police were involved and of course the fire force were involved, I was expected to be the reporter and, uh, not as in writing, but that's kinda how we've operated. A lot of that's word of mouth and I realize that it can't fit on that, you have a problem with it. If everybody doesn't subscribe to the game, it's not formalized, that's the problem. So, if somebody objects, uh, you know, on serious matters, that's how, you know, that's how we work. And then a couple of death accidents ago, last few years, it worked real well. But we need a, uh, a spokesman, uh, we really got, we really get spokesman on staff all week.
And, and it kinda reaches, you know, it reaches to the point of the social media now too. And I realize that, you know, I realize we all got our personal Facebooks and that sort of thing and, you know, I'm not telling anybody how they can or can't run their own Facebook, but, you know, I don't, I don't typically put something on Facebook, on my Facebook that says, you know, uh, today I was responsible for making sure council did X, Y, or Z, 'cause I don't view it that way. Now, I, if I do say something, I used to say, today the city did such and such and thus and so, but I don't ever put anything like that on my personal Facebook anyway. Um, so, we have social media policies that we...
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
And I, and I'm aware of that, um, and we've got very formal policies about our public information spread. You know, going back to what Rusty said earlier about kudos, you know, lacking to know when people, well, I, I happened to look at your Facebook page the other day at the fire department and I noticed there was a ratings tab and I clicked on that and looked down and there was, there was eight or nine people who had, you know, given the fire department a five-star rating and made great comments about, uh, the fire department. I was never aware that that was even there until I happened to notice it, of course I'm not, I'm not the Facebook expert that my wife is, but I don't know how to super around some of that stuff. It was quite by happenstance that I, that I looked at, uh, but it was excellent commentary.
Well, unlike with the, the storm we had, our information was so fluid and dynamic that, um, and Derek was having a hard time getting things posted on the city page, so he just made me an administrator and I pretty much, during that time, made sure anything that we were putting out as information also on the city's page, that there was consistency with that information and vice versa.
Yeah, and I appreciated that. I appreciated everybody's hard work, by the way, this day of the, uh, of the hurricane calling, pressing. I wrote to JD for all morning and I met with Wesley and Derek and, and we talked about various things and, uh, I was just amazed at how much goes on, you know, really short. I know you're familiar with this kind of stuff, man, it was just, it was constant. I mean, it was a tree down, it was a power line down. No sooner than you get to one, there's another. No sooner than you get to that one, there's another. And, you know, everybody was going, everybody was checking them out, nobody was complaining, people were moving out the chainsaws and getting out of the road, nobody was worried about who was in charge, it was just happening. And it was one of the greatest experiences I've had in the years that I've been on the council, so, I wanna thank y'all for that.
It's funny how people complain. Do you look at the shoes she's wearing or, you know, the trunk is doing this or it's the petty day-to-day stuff that goes on, but it's things that, how well people come together, it's, it's...
Um, some of those people, not all of them, they still gonna fuss about everything of the stuff.
They gonna fuss tomorrow, but today we're gonna make...
Yeah, yeah, some of them, lady. The only thing that I did cover that was on in your list I was aware of was, um, I missed this Rusty, you had something on your list about a purchase agreement between the county and the city of Byron, the city of Fort Valleys, you, from time to time when you buy vehicles cheaper. Alec, I guess Derek, maybe you wanna address that, maybe, even though...
We can check, but general, we purchase the more chance, we get a state contract anyway. So if the state contract accorded, we're all dealers, there's no cheap price. Best price state offers, don't matter if five, four hundred, they take price.
I think we found that out this year, 'cause we did replace a lot of vehicles this year when we didn't get enough. That was it.
That was brought to you, we're the deck of cheap, compared to what you and I would take.
Well, that probably is like, I think, all the vehicles we bought this year were like police cars, cheap one and cheap two for the fire department. Uh, I don't know if there's anything different on that if you buy like a fire truck with, with the city of Byron, Jeff Dole's be able to go together, give that deal.
They've got purchasing, um, the problem with that, that I found is, is like the, uh, the biggest one that most of the chiefs and touries have run with is the police sheriffs. But then the fire truck that they offer is such a cookie cutter fire truck, it doesn't fit your needs and then you go in with the manufacturer and negotiate change orders to make it fit your specs, but it adds so much to it that you might as well be out to be it for yourself and you...
But it adds so much to it that you might as well put it out to be a free self and get by dispatch team.
Anything you wanted to add to it?
I, I don't have any experience in buying police cars, but when I was looking at specifically fire trucks before, if you bought one, it was like two twenty-five, if you bought two, it was ten, if you bought five, it was two-hundred, you know, and there was a breakdown, but, what he's saying is, is possibly true there, it could be.
Well, I mean, I could see that, as, as long as everybody was wanting to equip the same one, I mean, that makes sense, what you're saying. Uh, to that extent. I know at one time I looked at, I looked, I think it's when we were looking at buying a fire truck, when you did that one out, um, who was that company that?
Um, there was.
Uh, the one you really wanted was a Pierce, was that right?
No, it was Ferrari, Ferrari.
Right, okay, that, that, uh, you know, I know at some point in there I acquired something, somebody sent it to me, or I got it, called Jeff, got it, whatever it was, it was what he asked for to equip a fire truck, and what he pays for, because I was trying to figure out, you know, overall, where could we get a good deal on a fire truck? That's what I'm saying, I think he had a standard list of stuff that he wanted on all his fire trucks. And I noticed, I looked at yours, and most of it was the same, there was other stuff that was different. You know, one, he insisted that he just had to have the bell on the front bumper. And I'm thinking, what?
If that's what makes a fire truck go, you know that, right?
Yeah, and I called him and asked him specifically about that, and it turned out to be just, that was a Jeff Dole's, by God, he wanted a bell on the front of his fire trucks, it's completely useless, it adds nothing to its abilities, it ain't even used. But he's informed it.
How's the bell gonna ring?
I heard that light truck we got had.
I was looking at fire trucks, but, to be honest with you, fire trucks, you only, they're good for twenty, thirty years, depending on how well you maintain them. What we find a lot of them is like mobility vehicles, and police cars, and stuff like that, maybe we could get a better deal if we pulled our resources. Uh, afford F-150, it's afford F-150, no matter who buys it.
All hours, hours of through the state contract, the state pricing that we get, matter of fact, I'm budgeting one this year, and um, I had to call and get the state's pricing for it.
That's the same way that it pretty quickly got.
Which is cheaper, which is cheaper you're gonna get, basically.
Y'all get that deal for nothing.
We couldn't get one last year on police cars, two trucks.
But we're in a.
They pretty much take your specs, and they do it out, they go, this is what the state is required, and that's what you pay.
Same way they do with tax.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Well, and then, you know, we found out last year, when we were pricing, when we were debating about whether the two vehicles for the fire department should be pickups or, or the explorers, uh, you know, we discovered, much to my surprise, that the standard explorer was actually more expensive than the interceptor model explorers. You know, which was blew my mind, but it turned out to be exactly the way it is, I mean, like five grand cheaper to buy the interceptors. So, you know, that was a surprise to me, but that was what we discovered, uh, so. Anyway. Alright, I think that's covered the mayor's list, and my list, Rusty's list.
Well, I was gonna ask you, you made open, right, right through question, you talk about it here? Anyway, but I, James, you got anything to say?
I don't.
Anyway, y'all said a lot of things here that, you know, when you're talking about planning session, I know Derek, Tommy, we've talked about this a couple times, doing a retreat, but you know, cost has always been a thing. But planning is, I committed my first couple meetings here, I think Mike was here, I think only one, David, maybe, you weren't here, but, yeah, first of all, we don't have what I would call a city plan. And, and Derek, we talked a lot about it, you know, maybe if we brought some dollars where we could go off and go to a retreat and look at it, and what I'm talking about is planning here, is number one, what, Byron's six and a half, seven square miles? And I know when I first got elected, and I'm sure Mike probably got, had all these people who were raised here, born here, grew up here, you get, no, we don't need to expand, we don't need to grow or anything, my comment is, if you don't grow, is one day, Byron's will be called four, or it's will be called one Robbins. And you know, a lot of y'all have asked me, you know, how come I never put a business here to do this, well, what I always say is my population. And, you know, the best thing that Byron has to do for itself is the interceptor. And I think we made a good move by bringing Tiffany, because I don't know if you heard, but first, the best thing that we can do with Byron is brand buy. And I think Tiffany's so far as doing a good business doing that. But what we need, and also, is what are city priorities, or of course, everybody knows that Derek, we work on the budget, we try to be very fair, or whatever. But, you know, again, until somebody tells you otherwise, you know, the priority always gonna be public safety, that's fire and police. Uh, I mean, that's pretty much about fifty percent of our budget, you know, that's the general fund. But there's other things that I just want to make everybody aware going, that, you know, that what other priorities do we have? You know, I'm saying you're looking at it, you know, first of all, is one big problem we've been facing for this last year, probably in the meeting, is our I-1 issue. Uh, you know, we've gone out and borrowed a lot of money, you know, north of, what, two and a half million dollars, there's that problem, you know, that should be a, that's a priority, and again, I don't want to get into Mike's committees, but, but dollars and cents could affect this city, because, you know, with the grammar we have, you know, um, there's quite a bit of money that we could be, um, have to pay the city, the making, because I, I'm not gonna say that money. I mean, well, we probably, so, I mean, that's, that's a big chunk, that responsibility on these key for loans, that, you know, a lot of our money goes to, I, I don't know the number right off, that, but, you know, that's quite a bit of money to pay back. I know we're dropping one, and going with another one, because we get a bigger, we get forgiveness, I'm correct, almost a half a million dollars?
Yes, sir.
So, but again, I just want to make sure, the other thing of it is, is you want more stormwater, we've all set the stormwater things, again, you know, first of the year, we're gonna have some, you know, we're probably gonna have some pushback, you know, because, you know, residents will get a fee and commercial on that. But just want to remind y'all, again, it's probably a twenty-year plan, but if y'all all see that book, that suggestion from outside source, we're, we're talking over eight and a half million dollars worth of work that the city has to be done, so. Um, but, you know, other stuff I thought, which y'all talked about earlier is, where's Byron gonna be for five years now, for ten years from now? And how can we use that slow, distinct growth here? And the first thing Byron needs to do, which I made a comment, y'all probably heard, one thing, by Dick County lumping up their military rate three percent, probably gonna help, because I know, when I read it in the banker, it's really upset a lot of homeowners up there. Uh, but what's gonna keep Byron going is get enough rooftops in here, people that want to come up to Byron, you know, bring their family here, raise a family here. Uh, so, but, you know, it's almost like, it's almost fake, you get the rooftops here, then all of a sudden you see the commercial. You know, you know, we got some commercial property, you know, talk about the big, uh, Ben Hawkins, Ben Hawkins, you know, we got a lot of empty spaces in these strips in our figure. Um, but until we get the population there, these people might come. The only positive thing that, that helps commercial is, we're at a, we're still at a four on our ISO rating. Let me tell you, that's a big benefit for a business company, that because it's, it's gonna cover all this insurance. You know, if we can get to a three, I think it's a little bit better, I don't have that number to us. But, I was reading an article a couple months ago, and I'm, I don't want to disrespect anybody's age in here, but, you know, our future, if I could say this, we ought to have optimism and a living on. Yes, Byron don't meet their criteria. I mean, you know, but, um, because, you know, they, they, you know, they, they want the theaters, they want the bars, they want the, the culture, outside culture, uh, this stuff, so, I mean, when I look at the big picture planning, that's what I look at. Yes, you know, what we need to do to, I don't care, we talked about, I don't know how you can get more rooftops in here, I know a lot of people, I think, uh, and priorities, I think, I don't know if it's in order, I'm gonna have to look it up, but, I think most people that look at the building, the communities, number one, affordability, about security, which has to require crime, misuse of home. I think this, you know, medical, education is big, is a big one in the top five. So, uh, I know I've, I've got a lot of personal friends, and my kids are a lot younger, they're, they're, they're fine here with the, the elementary school, the middle school, it's the problem they have is when the kids go to, to uh, high school, uh, you know, I hope that when they rebuild this new high school, that the whole mind change there. But, you know, I think we need to look at our planning focuses, you know, what we want to see Byron five years from now, we talked about commercial. You know, uh, is there three elements that are free for tax? And do we have all of them available?
We have two out of there, Karen has all four.
It's hard to get all three, you know, for somebody to come and build a business here. Uh, that plays a big factor on that, too, because, you know, you know, I travel all over the state, I, I'm, knock on wood, but I'm, I have, I have no bad location, the reason I did that was due diligence. First thing you always look at, what is your day kind of population? What is your rooftops? You know, what is, you know, police and fire? Uh, you know, look at the ISO rating, what the crime rate is, and basically it's rooftops, you know. And, you know, I think basically, but I, I think that's, should be our next planning section that we can set down where we think we need to be, but again, the other thing of it is, is, you know, what happens, like, uh, Pox Ridge, how many houses are gonna be building in there?
Probably sixty-three start now.
Yeah, that's the worst, I hope they get all set, well, you know, we don't have a lot of, our budget's not real big, our revenue center, so, you have to maximize that, but then the question is, well, if it builds out.
There's land next to it.
You, you know, okay, what's that gonna mean to the police department, what's gonna mean to the fire department, what's gonna mean to utilities, you know? You gotta take all that into consideration, and uh, and everybody knows that, you know, I'm, I'm, as long as we can keep our military rate down, I mean, both Mike and myself have been here, what, sixteen years, almost? And maybe two times we increased military rate, and it was a minimum amount. And uh, but, but, you know, I think, you know, we just need to continue to grow, stay focused on where we need to be five years from now, whatever. But, I don't have all the answers, but I just know that if we don't, and it's probably not gonna happen in our lifetime, but that if we don't, we're gonna die on the vine, you know? So, anyway, that's what my mind of the planning session is, is, you know, where does Byron want to be five years, ten years, fifteen, twenty years from now? You know, a lot of it that Mike and the mayor talked about, you know, we gotta look at the infrastructure from, um, the enterprise, you know, if it is running water sewer over here, or, or there, you know, that's, we know it's costs a lot of money, you know, you gotta factor that in. You know, so, anyway, I just want to get on my socks, you know? But I mean, that's probably the next step that we need to take going forward, and talk about planning.
Quality growth seminar, would it be good for us?
Yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, my question is, is, I was thinking, because, you know, I've been here, what, thirty-five years, I raised three kids. You know, but today, how could you sell to a families looking in the house, and want Robbins or Southfield, give them the reason why they ought to buy a home, you know, buy a city?
Correct.
That's part of it. That, that goes to that branding part, you know?
And maximize deposit, that's the important, education's a big key.
Yeah, and I mean, it is.
You tend to get that.
Yeah, I don't think it's bad as what it used to be.
It's not, but people, we got that some.
When they started building the high schools in Council County, I'll tell you now, Bon Harris exploded, they built a subdivision, now I have.
Yeah. But I don't know if y'all, what it's, I mean, they spent a ton of money on that veteran high school, you gotta do that, see?
Yeah, they're actually.
A small campus.
Building another section of it, because they're outgrowing it already.
But, but again, I mean, you work out the land like here, we need to maximize that six and a half, does anybody know the, the correct square miles that we have in Byron? It's six and a half to seven miles.
One time Billy Matt gave me a figure, six and a half. Depending on what, what phase the moon was in, whatever, I would try to.
But anyway, but I think that's what our next thing of it is, and then on the end, uh, everybody pretty much knows this, and for our council member, and I think our council members need to be off focus, too. I think, again, y'all heard me say this, and, uh, you know, I don't have an agenda, I think all council members need to, you know, their personal agendas, they have, the personalities they have with partner heads, you know, we need to get them resolved, and it's just move forward, because it becomes a distraction. Man, I won't mention all the names, but it is what it is, so. But I think, you know, Derek, you agree about the planning session?
I think we need to take at least three days a year. One day do a planning session like this, one day do a planning session have, they invite Fort Valley, the Peach County Commissioners, and us Peach County, and then one time a year, maybe meeting the delegation from Atlanta.
Well, what you need to do when we have these intergovernmental meetings, I mean, we already are supposed to be having four of those a year, and they go on for hour and a half, two hours. That's when you should bring those things, and like the joints, uh, we're gonna have something. Super detailed needs to be worked for, then you can have a set them, but we do have four meetings, we do have all day, so.
Do they have any of these meetings since two thousand eight?
These are right back.
We used to have workshops before the council begins now, that everybody just kind of get everybody, you know, schedules, you know, we used to have it in Thursday for meetings, if you remember. But, you know, the biggest thing in county is, you know, you don't want the county to love, and I'm not even gonna say the word.
They don't, yeah.
No, yeah, consolidation, not this, I can work, I mean, that's what they were hoping for. Huh?
Won't be in the next two years, anyway.
But I mean, that's what you gotta, we need to look at, you know, is, what's the best majority, um, uh, the residents here, because I, I look at, you know, part of my responsibility, and especially with the budgets and the times that, and again, Derek's pretty much done most of the work the last couple of years, but as, you know, stewards of being affected with the tax dollars, you know? So. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. I think the planning retreat would be a good idea, I mean, I, there's some excellent people out there who facilitate those things, people like Gordon Maynor, who do that sort of stuff, but it's the sort of thing where we need to bring our comprehensive plan, and uh, sort of work in conjunction with what our comprehensive plan is, so you get a better idea of how to update it in the future, and keep in mind the sort of stuff that Mike was talking about.
But I, I mean, really, I mean, the most impressive thing was, I think she used to state rent, and I was the, anyone who went to GM at the, the place, the mayor of my, my cell.
Yeah, so is Tom.
I mean, she, you know, again, look, if you go down there, you know, of course, the question here, do we have a, a really downtown? Or can we do it downtown? I know there's been a lot of cities that have tried to redevelop downtown, that have failures, that have some success. You know, first thing I, you know, I've said for years is, God, the best thing you have downtown of Byron is get all you. downtown of Byron is get all utilities under great. But in order to get that, we would have to forfeit all our franchise fees, Georgia Power, the wind stream, cops cable, which, again, which helps fund the city, so, you know, lose that for ten or fifteen years, you know, that's, how you gonna resubmit that, you know? But that would make a difference, you know? We got some old buildings, you know, that we can give incentives to the spruce up. And I think Tiffany did one time, they get some grant money that where you could do a facade upright, but I don't know how many people took advantage of it or not, you know?
They did.
And, so, but, but, you know, our, it's getting, you know, twenty years from now or ten years, fifteen, it is the business that, that come to Byron. You know, and that's, that's what the general, so, you know, you know, they're going to the big cities, you know, where the theaters, the harm, the, you know, of course, hoping that they'll wake up before then, and.
You want to go to planning session?
I have to say something, I travel all over the state like you do. And the thing that stands out to me, the difference between a lot of the smaller cities and communities go to is, one, the sign you're talking about, it can make a first impression. So, this is a first class place. Secondly, it's how you maintain your public space. And, you know, just like the people, we get a new school in Dick County, they have in the budget, they have a lot of nice things in the grounds and everything, that'd be the first thing they cut out of budget. So, the first thing you do when you look at the school, look like, this doesn't look right, I mean, this, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not beautiful. But people really are attracted to that, and they wanna live in a place like that, really cares about itself, and that, you know, it's just like the first impression is so important.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
If you're going to send your vibe around Johnboro, there's one of the exits that they've got some black metal on top of the bridge, you got the little curly lights up there, landscape to the hill, probably five hundred bushes, you know, about this big. It's gorgeous. Get out there, get it. It's, it's nice. I'd love to see that happen by.
Well, on that line, you know, we had, we had intentions of putting water at the interchange, and the D O P will not allow that, so we can't do that. So, that changed the landscaping plan that we could do. Tiffany's still working on trying to get a landscaping grant to, to put some money out there. The lights are coming, the lights are basically a done deal, it's just gonna happen, it's next year, probably, is when we get it all put together, so the new lights will be there. That's something we've been working on for a while, that's, that's fixing to happen. So, you know, we're gonna get some, some new curb appeal. You know, we can get some of those trees done, taken care of, and other landscaping out there.
The reason we didn't get that last fifty thousand dollar grant is we want to plant a lot more flowers than trees, and they don't like flowers, they like trees, which.
Trees with flower holes.
Oh, yeah. But, you know, to kind of keep from what's happening now with those sprayer pairs and things, but they like trees.
How about the crape myrtles? Is that a good compromise? That's a, that's a tree that's really huge, but.
Had to do some research, it took two or three days. I had incidents with, with, you know, Albany, Georgia had their own power. And there's some power lines wrong with the thing, of course, originally, that was an issue because, you know, of course, everybody loves the green space. You know, as a guy that, in business, I don't have a problem with green space, but I don't have a problem with the whole world's green space. But, but I, they signed off my plans, my landscaping plan, and then they came back and told me I couldn't put the trees because they were too tall because of the power lines that was on one side of the building. They only wanted so many things, and I said, that's gonna look ugly. You know, I could put shrubs out there or whatever, but decent research, there is a crape myrtle, if I'm not mistaken, it's called a Cherokee rose. It only hits maybe if it gets eight feet tall or ten feet tall. And, and that's what solved my problem is, but, you know, they kept telling me I had to put trees in there, but the power people kept telling me, no, you can't, they only have to be so tall, but the local P Z kept saying, or the arborists they have down there, they didn't hire an arborist.
That's.
But I had, it took me about three days to find me this, this good one, and it just popped up a crape myrtle.
Well, so, I was going to Fort Valley, they're pretty trees that they would name that.
They wouldn't butcher it, but that's great.
But it only grows eight to ten feet tall, it's called. And that's how I got proof of that. And I was like, terminal, because somebody told me you can't be so high, but then they wanted trees. Yeah, also, I'm not happy with crape myrtles too, because most harvesters in cities, they expect so many circumference at the base of the tree, and, you know, most of them that require, I think somebody brother or sister must be in the tree business, and this happens on, they want a two and a half circumference. It's hard to find a two and a half circumference, you almost have to go to three inch, and your price is up. And that crape myrtle, by now, is you got many shoots out of it that you add all circumference, each one of equals one that we trade.
Well, folks, in the interest of everybody's time, we're coming up to fund the red block. The next planning session will be in the month of January. We will have a quality group, for seven on, seven four, et cetera. We've spent about twenty years with the good ones, so we need to do it again. That's a great idea.
Well, I think what you need to do is find a city that, ten years ago, that was about the size of Byron, and, and, you know, see, you know, again, I don't know. But the biggest thing for us is just to get more families here. Now, they use some building your rooftops, your daytime, I mean, your rooftops, and then once the rooftops are out, then you'll see more commercial coming in. And then I mean, this is a dominant state. Also, I meant to tell you, and I meant to look it up before I got here and did, how many acres that we have over here? And.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. And we on, how many lots?
Five lots.
Okay. You know, they, they have this international shopping center association, they have twenty people every year in Las Vegas. And if you ever been in this kind of expensive neighborhood, I don't know what they charge, but you can walk in, there's almost every, every state in the United States, even fourth country, that, that developers, people who have land, for sale. I think I would call up, they have a, a southern one, I think they do in Orlando, where, you know, you go put your booth up, and people like me become members because I want to develop or I'm looking for a piece of property I want to bring a business into. Again, I don't know what that costs, but it might be worth that one day or two day venue to market or help the development company develop that, if, you know? So, so I'll do, I'll check on that.
Members of council, do we have motion? They have motion, good job. They have a second.
Can we motion the gentleman?
Motion to go to the committee as a whole, yeah. I think we can just adjourn now, and we are in charge. Make sure you keep copy of this.
How you doing?